We're being, our quarterly recording by Carroll County Cable, so we'll be on our best behavior tonight. But we'll call the meeting to order, please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance. Dear Lord, we submit ourselves to you as your servants and the servants of the people of Hampstead who place their trust in us. Please allow every word that is spoken and every action taken to be in the best interest of Hampstead. O Lord, bless this meeting and our town. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tammy, if you wouldn't mind, call the roll.
Mayor Nevin.
Here.
Councilmember Duff.
Here.
Councilmember Renahan.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
And Councilmember Unglesby.
Here.
So you'll notice there's one seat empty, which we'll take care of in a little bit, but Jim Rourke, Councilmember Rourke, we were doing this last month, but since we're on tape tonight, Jim has gotten a job with the town of Hampstead as the Assistant Zoning Administrator. And so he can no longer sit on the town council, so we have somebody who's ready to step up and will be sitting here shortly. But I thank Jim for his five years on the council and his two years before that on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And he, you know, from not knowing a lot about planning and zoning and just living in town, he, you know, became an expert at our code book and everything town planning and zoning related. So we look forward to having him behind the closed door over there, working for the town every single day. But Jim, thanks again for your service. All right, minute approvals for February 11th.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And then Tammy, Town Manager's Report and Main Street Revitalization.
The downtown revitalization project, State Highway did not hold a partnering meeting in February. However, town staff continue to meet with State Highway's Project Manager and CJ Miller Superintendent weekly to discuss the Main Street project schedule and updates. The new meter boxes for the lampposts were installed on March 3rd. BG&E has connected the power to two of those boxes. The power drop to the box on Gil Avenue needs to be engineered by BG&E before they can connect the box. So unfortunately, the lampposts that are unlit will not be lit immediately as we originally thought. They have to engineer the drop before they can connect the power. CJ Miller has finished demolishing old sidewalks on the northbound lane. The temperatures have been so warm that crews have been able to pour some of the regular sidewalk. A separate crew will pour the pervious sidewalks later in the spring. Once this section is complete, they plan to switch to the southbound lane and travel south, beginning with removing the old sidewalk on that side. Our planning and zoning meeting this month, we had Florida Rock Properties Concept Plan for the Hampstead Overlook Development was approved. Renovations for the mill on Gil Avenue were also approved. These renovations include the removal of the exterior metal panels and framework, which will reveal the original brick and concrete of the building. The requests also included the removal of the front porch, the front parapet wall, and the back porch roof. The recommendations from the February 19th Special Work Session were incorporated into updated goals for the 2020 Comprehensive Plan and were given to the commission to review. These goals will be discussed during this month's meeting, along with how to solicit community output. With our residential projects in town, the Hampstead Overlook Concept Plan is being reviewed by the Carroll County Stormwater Department. I actually received an email late this afternoon with, it has been reviewed and sent back to Florida Rock with comments and some items that need to be addressed. Florida Rock and the town met with the County Department of Review about the entrance of the development and the connection to the Houcksville Road, as you know, is a county road. The county is requiring additional traffic study information. One is, once it is determined how this connection should be designed, Florida Rock will begin working on their preliminary plan. Ten houses at Northside Estates have been sold. There are two move-in ready homes built and J.A. Myers has applied for permits to build two more. And these latter two lots must be stabilized, must have stabilized grass to provide adequate sediment control before the work on the stormwater facility can begin. And then the remaining three vacant lots will be marketed after this facility has been built. And they estimate that would occur, that'll be finished in the fall. With our commercial projects in town, there are continual meetings and discussions with Carroll County Economic Development about the North Carroll Business Park and also a local business expansion. I had a meeting with representatives from a real estate services company to discuss commercial investment opportunities in Hampstead. And the town continues to receive inquiries about properties that are for sale within and adjacent to town limits. Real estate developers exploring the purchase of the Old Town Grill property for the intended use of a Dollar General. We have not received any formal site plan for review yet. The development of this site plan would need to adhere to the Main Street Revitalization Regulations listed in our town code. Dunkin' Donuts in the south section of Main Street has applied for a natural gas hookup with BG&E. State Highway is requiring them to work under our new road, so there will not be any work conducted in the travel lanes. They will have to remove asphalt in the northbound lane shoulder to make the connection to the gas line. Within Public Works, Main Street has finished the raw, excuse me, Mid-Atlantic has finished the raw waterline project, including seeding and paving on, patching on Upper Ford Lane. This much, this month, much of the staff's time was engaged with creating the new mowing bids and marking the areas for potential bidders. Then our Finance Department, we've begun the preparation of the 2021 budget. We have another internal meeting scheduled for this week. And just a reminder again about the Fourth Annual Hampstead Manchester Business and Community Expo will be held at Manchester Valley High School this Saturday, March 14th, from 9:00 to 2:00. The town will be staffing a table and State Highway will also have a table. I attended the Carroll County Downtowns Meeting, and the Carroll County Downtowns are the designated Main Streets and Hampstead. The main topic of the discussion was MML Main Street Boost at the Annual Conference, which Hampstead will have a table again this year. The group evaluated the passport program that begins on Small Business Saturday in November. Participants are required to make eight purchases at eight different businesses in eight days before they can enter their passport into a drawing for a gift card. It was determined that eight days is not enough time for this endeavor, so it will be expanded to two weeks next year. The Census for 2020. Census Day is observed nationwide on April 1st, 2020. By this date, every home will receive an invitation to participate in the 2020 Census. Once the invitation arrives, you should respond for your home in one of three ways. Online, by phone, or by mail. In, by May, 2020, the Census Bureau begins visiting homes that have not responded to the 2020 Census that was mailed out to make sure everyone's counted. And I just want to let everybody know, if someone visits your home to collect information for the 2020 Census, you may ask to see a badge. This badge should have a photograph and a U.S. Department of Commerce watermark and an expiration date. Census workers will never ask for your social security number, bank or credit card numbers, money, donations, or your political party. The Census Bureau must deliver, excuse me, appropriate, can't even say it, counts to the President and Congress by December 31st, 2020, as required by law. The Census Bureau will begin sending redistricting counts to states by March 31st.
Do we keep track of who hasn't responded?
No, that's the Census workers.
So they won't keep, they won't help, we can't help them?
We help by marketing and getting the information out as much as possible.
They won't tell us who they're missing, what addresses?
I guess we could ask them.
Please.
But mostly they're keeping track of everything. We always have a good, Carroll County has one of the best counts in the state. It's like 83, 85%.
That's 17 to 15% lost.
I know, but it's still one of the best in the state.
It means less money for the town, so, you know, I can understand why some people don't want to do it, but, you know, you should. All right, who oversights? Marlene?
Keith Johnson, who's been serving as Market Manager, informed me that as of today, 12 vendors from 2019 are returning, and three new vendors have committed to this summer's market season. He's going to contact any of last year's vendors whom he has not heard from by April the 1st. So we're looking forward to another very successful market season with him at the helm. Keith's also confirmed participation by all of last year's breakfast chefs and musicians, and he has set up a schedule for each of them. The banking information and marketing accounts have been successfully transferred to the market's new treasurer, Mrs. Lois Johnson. Keith, Sharon, and I will be visiting local businesses this month to secure website sponsorship support for the market, since this is the major source of funding for the market and how we pay our bills. The first week of April, I'll be attending the essay reading session at MML Headquarters in Annapolis, and this is for Maryland 4th graders who submitted an entry for the If I Were Mayor essay contest. That's it.
Thanks for doing that. Wayne?
Hampstead Train Station Committee, Music in the Park Program kicks off on June 13th, followed by a date on June 27th, then July 11th, July 25th, August 15th, August 29th, and the last one will be September 12th. We've booked three bands so far and have requested out for four more, so hopefully we'll get them all booked.
No, I haven't called them yet, but I will. I gave them a referral.
The renovations are, spelled the guy's name wrong. Renovations are, are behind schedule on this station, but we expect them to get caught up over the next couple of months. On the Tree Commission, we have a meeting later this month. We'll be finalizing our spring planting, which is going to be in Westwood Park this spring. We've ordered up 200 trees. We're going to be replenishing the trees that have perished in some of the tree banks that they already had existing, and we're going to be planting trees in, I think, two or three other areas at Westwood Park. So looking forward to good tree planting in early April.
That's all I have. Thank you. Joe?
Okay, War Memorial Status, we're, there's something by the end of May as far as grant. Odin Kemp, we're looking for, looking at a ribbon cutting by the end of April for the new park. We are also, we've been working with BG&E on some of the EV charging stations at Odin Kemp Park. They will be located below the basketball court and will include four spaces. This is a pilot program being conducted by BG&E with no cost to the town. BG&E will install, maintain, own, and operate the chargers. They will install a new meter, so the site host does not have to pay for their electricity. They will then charge the customer 0.18 kilowatts to charge their vehicles at the stations. That's all I have right now.
Okay, thank you. Dave?
February 2020, average water usage was 331,000 gallons per day. March 2020, average water usage so far is 333,000 gallons per day. Rainfall total for February 2020 was 2.0. Rainfall total so far for March is 0.045.
All right. Chief?
During February, our traffic safety efforts resulted in 49 citations being issued, 73 warnings. Thirteen crashes were reported, three within the bypass, and 42 served. Specific traffic enforcement activities, targeted enforcement, we conducted 10 selective enforcements at the new stop sign, North Woods and Clearview. A few citations, nine written warnings were issued, two selective enforcements in the 800 and 900 block, Main Street relative to speeding complaints, three citations, two written warnings were issued, and one selective enforcement at Farmwoods Lane and Upper Ford as a result of complaints relative to both speeding and the stop sign there. No violations were observed in that particular area. 544 property checks were made of businesses and schools. With reference to serious crime, we investigated one domestic assault and theft and two DUIs. The end result of that were four adults were arrested and charged with various crimes. In the training category, Lieutenant Gagor finished her firearms classroom portion for the year. Rob Worrum attended the hostage negotiation seminar, and I mentioned it before, he's part of the county crisis negotiation team, so that was in conjunction with the training that they give. Our new administrative assistant, Samantha Gager, she attended a customer service training class down at the NPCTC Training Facility in Sykesville. Officers Vannick and Worrum attended a trauma-informed interviewing class relative to how we interact with people that are victims of, you know, serious crimes, commonly domestic violence, and different techniques and different approaches when we're interviewing those folks. Officer Vannick also attended a Foundations of Leadership class, and Officer Cranshaw completed a pedestrian safety enforcement course. Lieutenant Gagor is actually completing this week her annual UCR, a refresher course of the state mandates that we complete. He attended several HOA meetings, and the last one that actually came in late, and I apologize if you got out of your way. Officer Spencer and I were invited to our, actually, our good friends at this point, Celebri, for Dr. Seuss' reading opportunity. Both had a chance to read things. I went out on a limb without council approval, and I did let them know the police department would in fact have green eggs in hand if we would have the opportunity. There's a lot of five-year-olds there. We had a good time, probably more time, a better time than we should have. That's it, that's all I have for today.
It's good that there's a little bit of fun. So my, my report, I was making the list before the meeting. There's a few things that have been going on last month that are coming up this month. Last Saturday is kind of neat, I ref in-house basketball games at North Carroll Rec Council, so that's, I guess, 3rd, 4th grade through 8th grade. But they have their championship Saturday over at North Carroll High School, and it's, you know, every hour and 15 minutes, a different group of kids walks in and plays their championship game for the in-house league. And it's just really neat to see, you know, it's a great community event for the North Carroll Rec Council, and there's a lot of good volunteers to make sure that, that event and that league goes off without a hitch every single year. Carroll County Connections is sort of an offshoot of the Carroll County Republican Club or Central Committee. Last month, they had a Board of Education night, and they had Marsha Herbert and Donna Savigny come in and present their ideas for the Board of Ed. They're both running for reelection. It's hard to believe, but primaries right around the corner, end of April, so early voting will start sometime in the middle of the month. But don't forget that, I mean, there, there's not a lot on the R side. There's a bunch of stuff going on on the D side, but those guys are all the way down at the bottom of the ballot, and everybody here knows just how important they are. So, and they do have competition, but I do think Donna and Marsha have earned our, earned our continued support. Tammy mentioned that we started with the Master Plan Work Session about what our visions are for future growth for the town of Hampstead. I attended that, as did most of the council. That was good to see. Along with Planning and Zoning Committee, attended the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting where the Hampstead Overlook Concept Plan got approved. Good to see that finally moving forward. In the vein of what the chief was talking about with the kids, every spring, we do the If I Were a Mayor contest, and Marlene's going to judge the essays. So I spent a morning at Spring Garden Elementary and Hampstead Elementary talking about reimagining tomorrow. So I started, since I've been around a while, I started back when I first started here, and different things we were looking at that are now seeing, coming to fruition, one of which is Main Street, and that's, you know, how long it took. But giving them, maybe they came up with some ideas I'd be interested in reading or seeing if they did to what Hampstead should look like 20 years from now. Carroll County Republican Central Committee had their annual dinner, their Reagan, somebody I'm missing, Lincoln Reagan Dinner. And they had a couple of congressmen, including Andy Harris, and it's, it's amazing how partisan things are at the federal level. And, you know, it's our job to make sure that doesn't happen here in Hampstead and really doesn't happen, so it's a good thing. Coming up, a couple of days from now, the Carroll County MML is going to get together all the mayors, councilpeople, town managers, and a few others up in Union Bridge. Tammy mentioned the HBA Expo at Man Valley this weekend coming up. And next week is the Northern News Awards. Lynn Shively from NISAP is the award winner this year, which is great to see. She's done a lot for that, and just before this meeting, we were down there for a ribbon, ribbon cutting. They expanded their warehouse and got it out of the basement. And they do a lot of good for the community and really help out the less fortunate. And it's amazing how many volunteer hours go into running that facility and how much it's needed by the community. So, and then next week, there's another Carroll County Connections event. They pushed it back a week because they usually have it the 3rd Tuesday, but that happens to be St. Patty's Day, so there's, there's no restaurant in their right mind who's going to give you free space for that. So they pushed it back a week, and that's going to be Law Enforcement Night with Brian D. Leonardo, who's the State's Attorney, Sheriff Dewis, and Judge Titus coming in. So, you know, it's a, it's a nice event to go to. So that's every, I think, everything I've got. No, there's no unfinished business. We have a few things on the, on the new business agenda, one of which is to fill the seat up here. I haven't really talked with the council too much about it, but, you know, I would recommend the election of Deborah Painter to the town council. She currently serves on the Planning and Zoning Commission. She's been an asset there for a number of years, and I think everybody got to know her here too with, you know, the North Carroll closing and the school issues that were going on. Somebody very vested in the community, and she'd make a good, good addition to this group of people.
I make a motion to appoint Deborah Painter to the position vacated by Councilman Rourke for the term.
Ending May of '23.
Thank you.
Second.
Not that I know. Second by Dave. Any further discussion?
Roll call.
Sure.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Duff?
Yes.
Councilwoman Renahan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Unglesby?
Yes.
Not quite, but you got to come up here and do the swearing-in stuff. I told you there'd be a lot of swearing tonight. Tammy?
I, Deborah Painter.
I, Deborah Painter.
Do swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
Do swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland?
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland?
And support the Constitution and laws thereof?
And support the Constitution and laws thereof?
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment?
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment?
Diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice?
Diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice?
Execute the office as a member of the council of the town of Hampstead?
Execute the office as a member of the council of the town of Hampstead?
According to the Constitution and laws of the state?
According to the Constitution and laws of this state?
Congratulations and welcome aboard.
I sign both. I sign both. One is yours and one is ours.
She's going to test that too.
And we keep one. Thank you.
Okay, you're good. Now you can sit up here.
Here, I have extra copy of this.
I got that, I got that covered. Maybe she's got to run. Hopefully we, we'll give her the temporary one until we get the wood one on.
I do.
All right, we'll do, do the next two, but the reappointment of Sharon Callahan to the Planning Commission. Is this your third term?
Sharon's fourth.
So.
I make a motion to reappoint Sharon Callahan to Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
All right, let me make two comments about Sharon. So she's.
Two, just two?
Just maybe. So, but she's served for us for a long time, and she's, you know, by, by trade, a realtor, so it always helps to have people who understand real estate and, and what goes behind real estate in the, on the planning and zoning and doing their duties. And I told Sharon, she's been serving a long time, she, and she's done a great job. And, you know, her and Marlene sort of retired from the farmer's market, but it's a five-year term, so it's not a short commitment for planning and zoning. But it's not like we're paying these people big bucks. I think it's $125 a meeting or something like that. So that if she does say she's had enough anywhere during the next five years, we fully understand why she would say, my time is done. But I much, very much appreciate her continuing to want to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission. So anybody have anything else to add before we vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We'll do Diane while she's sitting there, so we can do both of you back-to-back. But the, so to fill in the spot that was left, I guess, vacant by you moving up to do the voted part of the job with, with Jim's vacancy, we're going to move Diane Barrett up from the Board of Zoning Appeals to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And she's done a great job on the Board of Zoning Appeals. She comes to all our meetings. She's definitely vested in the community. So an accountant by trade, we always, we always like people who can balance the books at the end of the day as well. So I really appreciate Diane stepping up, and I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to appoint Diane Barrett to Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Verification of term, five years?
No, she is taking somebody's three, I believe. So it's like three years, I believe. We'll, you know, we'll figure that out.
I don't remember. Sorry.
Sorry.
How about just to say to fill her unserved, her unfinished term?
That's fine.
There you go.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, Sharon, we'll do you first.
It'll be.
It looks like.
It looks like that.
Yes.
I, Sharon Callahan.
I, Sharon Callahan.
And swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
Do swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland?
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland?
And support the Constitution and laws thereof?
And support the Constitution and laws thereof?
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment?
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment?
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully?
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice?
Execute the office as a member of the Hampstead Planning and Zoning Commission?
Execute the office as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission?
According to the Constitution and laws of the state?
According to the Constitution and laws of the state?
All right, Diane.
I, Diane Barrett.
I, Diane Barrett.
And swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
Do swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland?
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland?
And support the Constitution and laws thereof?
And support the Constitution and laws thereof?
And that I will, to the best of my judgment?
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment?
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully?
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice?
Execute the office as a member of the Hampstead Planning and Zoning Commission?
Execute the office as a member of the Hampstead Planning and Zoning Commission?
According to the Constitution and laws of the state?
According to the Constitution and laws of the state?
Sign first.
Turn this upside down and let her sign first. And then you're signing this one too. Let me sign this. You can keep this one. She can keep that one, and then I will keep this one. Thank you.
It's great to have such high-quality people stepping up to help us out in such important duties for what the future of our town's going to look like, so I really thank you ladies again. All right, talking about what the future of the town looks like, this is the Award of a Contract for Town Mowing. We have requests for bids, 20, 21, well, basically 1, 2, and 3 in the year 2020. We broke them down this year, 1st for the water facilities, 1st for the government building parks and common areas, and the stormwater pond and facilities last. So Tammy, you have?
We, I just want to say that Public Works Superintendent Kevin Hand and Assistant Superintendent Toby David put a lot of work into this, of course, working with Christie from Town Hall, and we were all looking at the mowing. We've accumulated a lot more area than we used to have. But Public Works is just, they're very proud of the way Hampstead looks and the way the grass looks and the way the stormwater looks means a lot to them. They want to present Hampstead in the best light. They, they want to ensure that Hampstead remains one of the best places to live and raise a family. So that's why they took efforts this year to, to look at the mowing bids to make sure all our properties are made properly and mowed according to schedule. And since our last contract, which was released for bid in 2015, the amounting, like I said, the amount of mowing locations and acreage has really increased. So to keep up with this, this is the reason why it's been separated into three separate bids, and also to hopefully make it more competitive. These bids were. These bids were reviews for price, reference, and then Kevin and Toby inspected the equipment. They visited the lowest bids, they visited the, their place of business to also take in consideration additional skills the contractors may have and other ways they could assist public work staffs with additional duties outside of turf mowing. And for example, the vil- their ability to assist with snow removal or leaf collection, tree removal, landscaping. After taking all of this in consideration, this is what the town is recommending to council for these different bids. So for the contract for 2020-01 Water Facilities, it is recommended that we award the contracted NICS associate, uh, for the three years, cost of $29,600.
Keep going.
Let me keep going, okay. And for contract 2020-02, for the government buildings, parks and common areas, D Skinner and Sons LLC, at a three-year cost of $56,652 and 55 cents. And for contract 2020-03, which is the stormwater ponds and facilities, we went back to, he wasn't the lowest bidder, but close to it. We, uh, were impressed, they were impressed with his facility and the additional skills for Myers Lawn Care and Services. So they lowered their price. I think it was just a couple thousand. Originally, it was $62,175 for three years, and it was renegotiated to $60,000 for three years. So we recommend for the stormwater ponds and facilities, Myers Lawn Care and Services Incorporated.
And everybody has all the list of everything over there. Any questions? I, I will give, um, like Tammy said, I'll give Kevin and Toby credit. They, um, what, did some exhaustive work. And actually, you know, I think for the first time ever, I actually went out and took a look at, at the equipment and, and these companies that are going to do this important work for the town of Hampstead. You figure, you know, mowing, but there's a lot to stormwater management mowing, you know, where, where the clippings end up and, and how they're presented, and how the, the town in general looks with their parks. And I, and, and as was pointed out, um, the job had grown too big for just one company. And I think we've, we've done a good job here at splitting out the work and, uh, and getting good bids as a result, which basically come in, basically what we're paying today, right?
Right, what we've been paying, we're, we're saving about $500 on these new contracts.
So, worked out for the best. So I'll take, if you're of a, of a mind, we can do all three of them at one time.
I make a motion that we accept.
Hold on a second.
This question.
I got a question.
Yep.
Okay. On your, the third bid, your, uh, 2020-03, for, for Myers Lawn Care and Services. Now, this is, this is a bid process, right?
Correct.
And they, they altered the bid after the bid was done?
And that's part of the contract that we can do that.
You can do that?
Yes.
Okay, so that, and everybody knew that?
It's part of the contract, so everybody's, you know, it's part of the bid documents.
Then that's fine.
Yes, so they know that we can do that.
Okay. Okay, I'm fine.
Good, thanks.
I make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the town manager for the three bids that we received for 2020-01, two and three.
Second.
Any further discussion, comment, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. So he's saving us a few bucks on number four on the agenda item. He's costing us a few bucks on, on, uh, on number five. I'm giving him grief. So approval of fiscal year budget rent revision, um, you know, a budget's just that, a shot at what we think things are going to cost. And, and then when we get into it, we find out it will cost a few more bucks. I think we allocated $200,000 to the job. And, uh, we need to transfer $46,000 from the reserve to Water Capital for the, um, well connection that we're doing. I guess this was the work that Mid-Atlantic just finished?
Correct.
So, and, um, you know, they're up in my neighborhood, I saw the work they did, it's very good. But we need to transfer $46,000 over to complete that contract so we can pay them.
Okay, make a motion to, uh, transfer $46,000 from the reserve to?
Water Capital.
To Water Capital.
Second. Second by Dave, any discussion? We need four votes in affirmative.
And a roll call.
Councilwoman Duff?
Yes.
Councilman Renahan?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Unglesby?
Yes.
An affirmative, so that's.
Did you forget something?
You forgot Ms. Painter.
I did, I'm sorry! You're not on the paper! I forgot I was on the first one too. No, that was for you, never mind. Um, and.
And Councilwoman Painter.
Councilwoman Painter.
Yes.
Thank you.
All together now. Councilwoman Painter.
All right, so we got a five oh vote. Thanks for listening.
She needed four or something.
I thought you were about to drink or something.
Other new business? I don't think there is any, um, public comments? Oh, I'm sorry, before we get into that, Tim. Our Boy Scout. You weren't told that I was going to call on you? Ah, she kept that from you.
Now it starts.
All right. Tell us who you are and what troop you represent.
I'm Logan Cavanaugh, I'm from Troop 380.
Which is where?
I'm over at Wesley Church.
Okay, that's a good, we've had a lot of your scouts come through. So, and how, and you are along the path to Eagle Scout, I assume?
Mm-hmm.
How far along?
Um, I'm just starting to plan my project.
Okay. Good. Any ideas what it's going to be?
Yeah, I'm building, uh, benches for Spring Garden Elementary.
That's a good project, we like it. Good, we've had benches built for us in the town too. Anything you learned tonight?
Yeah.
You're not just going to say yeah, you gotta tell me what it is you learned. I gotta make you earn this merit badge.
All the different financial things that have to go into local government and all that kind of stuff.
Good. Well, thank you very much for coming, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right. Good to see you. And good luck with your project.
Thank you.
All right, Tim, sorry.
So we, um, we're on our third, this should be our third, you know? So we do the, we do the Walk a Mile in Her Shoes, uh, over in Westminster, uh, April 18th, uh, which is for, um, RCIS of Carroll County, Rape Crisis Intervention Service. So last year, we put together Team Hampstead, I think we had four walkers, which three of them were here. And, uh, we ended up, uh, we were the second, um, fundraising team in the whole event. Uh, we've all, we've started Team Hampstead again this year. Um, so far, we've recruited one additional walker, uh, that we know of. Um, so we want to extend an invitation, uh, to you guys, if anybody wants to participate. I'm happy to send the link over to, over to Tammy. We're also, uh, pushing, you know, the, um, the event on social media to try to get other folks from Hampstead involved, because we think it'd be pretty cool if we can get a good showing and representation out there. Because it really is a great event, and it takes about an hour to do it. And, uh, it's a bunch of, um, it's a bunch of guys in women's shoes. And you get some really interesting looks walking through downtown Westminster. And, uh, it's a lot of fun, and it's for a great cause, and it's an organization we're going to support once we're open, so.
Good, any of those shoes flats?
No, but, um, I did find, it's very difficult to find a size 15.
And, and you had some news on your business too, right?
Uh, we do, um, so not, not official yet, but, um, we're real close to knowing, knowing a timeline. Uh, we are, we're waiting on the closing letter to come from M&amp;T. Um, and our general contractor is going to get started as soon as we can produce that.
Who's your GC?
Uh, MCN Build out of Washington DC. They have a Baltimore office, um, they do a lot of, uh, schools and hospitals and those kind of things. Um, we met them at an, at an opening for another brewery downtown in Baltimore. And, uh, they are taking our tiny project in hopes of the expansion, which would be great for.
Good.
The town, so. Anyway, hopefully, uh, we're getting started on construction in the next, uh, two to three weeks, maybe?
You've had the patience of Joe of getting through all that, so.
It's not been, not been easy.
Yep, well, we look forward, you know, when it gets there to having, having a beverage at your, at your brewery. Thank you.
What's the date of that event, the Walk a Mile?
April 18. Yeah, I can send, I can send Tammy the link.
I'll send it out to everybody.
All right. Thanks, anybody else? Mr. Harold, good to see you.
Doug Harold. Election's coming up next month. I hope we don't have short members. Do you recall who made the motion to close North Carroll High School?
Yep.
She's running for election. And I think, uh, Ms. Herbert and Ms. Savigny have done a swell job. I think we need to put our resources to getting those two back in office, our president, our vice president of board. And, uh, I don't think they are one to issue pigeons for superintendent as some of the others were. I urge everyone to get out with their friends, just reelect Ms. Herbert and Ms. Savigny.
Couldn't agree more, thanks Doug. Anybody else? Not once, twice, three times, and for those watching on TV, thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you all again.